Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting February 27, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Craig Burnett passed away in February 22 at the age of 49 after a long battle with addiction. He was a lifelong resident of Whitman. He worked at the Abington Sewer Department and in the construction field. Craig was an avid New England sports fan and had a gift for making others laugh. He was goofy, crazy uncle in the family, and he was loved dearly by his nieces and nephews, and he was a crazy cat dad. He will be missed by all, his loving family and friends. Donations in his memory can be made to Abington Copes, 358 High Street in Abington. Thank you. And while we're on that subject, if anyone is listening and they do need help with addiction or substance use, or if you're a family member of someone that is struggling, please reach out to Abington Copes, or you can call the Selectmen's office and we can put you in touch with people. Thank you. Public comment? Mr. Hags?
Yes, I do. Abington Copes is hosting No First Time in Early Education and Awareness to Help Prevent Substance Use on Wednesday, next Wednesday, March 8, 2023, in the Abington Police Station Community Room at 6:00 PM, 215 Central Street. Hear from a state trooper drug recognition expert, a family bravely sharing their story of loss, and from a person in longtime recovery. Parents, caregivers, tweens, and teens are welcome to attend. Dinner will be included. Please come join Abington Copes on March 8 for no first time at the Abington Police Station. And this is from our Veterans Agent, our wonderful, awesome Veterans Agent, Adam Gunn. The Town of Abington Veterans Breakfast is celebrating their year anniversary on March 1 this Wednesday at 10:00 AM at Martin's Restaurant, 205 North Avenue, Abington, obviously Abington. Guest speaker will have home base and a huge shout out to Martin's Restaurant for hosting these Veterans breakfasts and really it's a great thing for our community and to honor those who served. My last public announcement, Mr. Chairman, is save the date to see Abington's theatrical talent. The Abington High School Drama is performing their production of Stephen King's 1974 novel, Carrie the Musical, on March 9 and 10 at 7:30 PM and March 11 at 2:00 PM at the Abington High School Auditorium. What Does It Cost to Be Kind? Carrie the Musical focuses on an outcast teenage girl, Carrie who longs to fit in. She's bullied by the popular crowd at school, and at home, she's dominated by her loving but cruelly controlling mother. Carrie discovers she's got telekinetic powers, and if pushed too far, she's not afraid to use them. Advisory warning to residents, Carrie contains mature subject matter and may not be suitable for younger audiences. Tickets to see the Broadway thriller are $12 for students and seniors, $15 for adults. Tickets are now, tickets will be available at the door for purchase of the shows, and they are also available online right now at tickets, oh, excuse me, at show, tix, T-I-X, four, the number four and the letter U dot com, ticketsforyou.com. And I also, as a former Abington, as an Abington alumni, and especially an alumni with the Abington Drama Club, I just want to give a huge shout out to all the actors, all the performers, all the band, the tech, the teachers, the customers, the signs, the set directors, everything, the set designers, everything is, there's so much that goes into these productions, and these kids doing a phenomenal job. So, and keep up the good work, and thank you for bringing a little Broadway magic to Abington. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Hagerty. Kevin?
Nothing.
Tim?
No, sir.
Mike?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. So, any public comment from anyone? Anyone? Okay, vote to approve minutes from February 13.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 13, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? The ayes have it. Planning Department, operational update and budget overview.
Good evening. So, for those of you who don't know me, and I don't think there's anybody, Liz Shade, I'm the Assistant Town Planner. Very tiny, tiny budget in the overall scheme of things. I think the biggest thing in the budget this year is whether we hire a town planner or we package up some work that needs to get done and hire a consultant. So, some of the planning board members want to hire a town planner, and the town manager and I have had several discussions on perhaps packaging these other projects out, and then we have a finite timeline on when they would be accomplished. So, I really don't have any opinion on either of them, except that the Town of Abington does need to see these projects start to move forward, and those projects that I'm most concerned about are mixed use on Route 18. With the airbase growing and growing and growing, we need to do something more than highway commercial. There's been a lot of interest in doing residential there, and, but we don't want to give up all our highway commercial space either. So, that will take a consultant or a town planner to come in and work on that. And the other one is the downtown revitalization. Our downtown centers are not thriving, so we need to start addressing that stuff, and we are moving towards that. There is some money that was earmarked in the state budget that we're going to use in this fiscal year. I've actually reached out to a consultant that I hope to speak to at the end of the week to maybe help us prioritize what should be done, like the best and highest use of the funding that we have. So, the cost of either of those things, I think, is in the ballpark of $85,000.
For a town planner and for?
Yes. I think the consultant would actually be a little less at the end of the day. She had, it would be $12,000 to do a downtown mixed income zoning, but a downtown revitalization would obviously take more than just looking at the zoning, and the Route 18 rezoning would be $40,000. So, we're under the 85, but we would also need to do more on that downtown revitalization part. I am, I do plan to apply for a grant to the state. I did that as part of our expression of interest, so we'll work on moving that forward. It's just a very competitive grant process with the state, so I'm not sure if we would be selected for that. Updates on other grants, though? We are moving forward with our Hazard Mitigation Plan update. I cannot say enough for the staff members who are working on that with me. They've been great. They've attended every meeting. They provided a lot of feedback, and I can tell you, we're doing this with three other communities, and they have not had the same experience that I've had. They're actually kind of falling behind us, so I can't say enough for all the help that I'm getting. Everybody's been fabulous to work with. We just finished up our green communities, which was weather stripping, destrat fans, and a heat pump. Ninety-five percent of that work was done in the schools. The senior center saw some weather stripping around the doors and, not the windows, just the doors, I think. We hope to take advantage of being completed with that, and they have a spring round for grants, and we're going to apply for a heat pump system for the senior center, for heat and cool air, so we can use that as a shelter if it's too hot or too cold. So, those are the big things going on right now. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Speaking of the senior center, what's there for a generator?
I believe, if I'm right, we have ordered one.
Yeah, we're waiting for that to come in.
Right.
It's a.
Finca and Alex, ten to lots, more pump stations.
And the new one will do the whole building?
Yes.
I'm not sure about the new one. I just know what is there now?
They will aim.
I think the new one does the whole building.
Right, okay.
Yep.
And that was, last year, we talked about that, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was, that was money that we, part of it was from a earmark, and part of it was through American Recovery Plan Act money, and it's just been a matter of waiting for the actual generator.
Supply line? Supply line? Supply line?
So, is the planning board requesting from FinCom a full-time planner?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, they asked me to put that in the budget. I have done that. There are several board members here tonight.
And that's about $85,000 you put in the budget?
$85,000 for, Scott, when we talked about that, that was salary, right?
That's just salary, doesn't it?
That's just salary, so that's not benefits and computers and space and everything else.
Your benefit package is probably 20-something percent on top of that, and it's, again, it's not something that, that I'm dead set against having a planner, it's just, we, I look at the surrounding communities and particularly Rockland, who's been advertising for a planner since last July with no interest, no bites. So, it ties up quite a bit of money that I know that we could just start taking on some of these projects that we need to do.
So, could you explain that? If we put it in the budget and it's approved, it's earmarked for a planner?
Well, it's earmarked for a planner, and we'll, we'll do our best to recruit and try and bring a planner in here until such time as we do, but that's all that that money would be earmarked for.
So, we couldn't use that for a consultant?
No.
Have you talked to Rockland? What issues are they seeing?
Nobody's applying for the job.
Just no, nobody's applying?
Nobody, no interest, no. And it's not just Rockland, there are other communities who have been trying, it's, it's the same story in most municipal positions right now.
There's no internships or colleges that have any sort of?
Well, you can't advertise it that way anyways, but you, we, they have, and they've reached out to the colleges, but I mean, you can't, that would show that you're having a preference towards somebody younger possibly, that you would never want to do. But, the encouragement would be retirees, it would be whatever, they're not getting any interest whatsoever, so.
Dan Crane want to come out of retirement?
I know, right? I would love for Dan Crane to come out of retirement.
So, you know, and I'm not saying that that would be our experience, we'll certainly do our best if it goes through. The other part of it is, you know, right now, that is a wish list along with, you know, several other departments have wish list items in there that we haven't quite passed out. We just got, and I'll mention it later, we just got some numbers in, the, the governor's budget came in with some numbers, and they're favorable, but they're not going to be enough for us to be able to take care of all of these wish list items for every department, so, you know, decisions are going to have to be made. I see immediate needs, though, that we want to deal with, and Route 18 is an immediate You know, I, I think I'll continue to have the conversations that I've had with Rockland. We had talked about shared planning services. Certainly, our destinies are somewhat tied together when it comes to the airbase, and there's going to be requests for rezoning on that. And again, maybe that's hiring a regional consultant, maybe not a permanent person. I think it's just, we have to start thinking along those lines right now.
So, do we have the money for a consultant if, if we put $85,000 in the budget for a planner?
I, I'm not going to commit to money on either way. I think what I, I think what I would do, and I think what we've already started to do, is begin our process anyways, because we don't want to wait on the downtown revitalization. We don't want to wait on Route 18, that we will try and leverage some of the Recovery Plan Act money funds, and we'll try and, you know, and again, we, we're lucky enough to receive the $100,000 earmark, so we can start parlaying that money and start getting some of these projects done anyways.
Right.
But there'll be more, you know, more things that we're going to want to do and deal with, and I don't know that that's the best, I don't know that it's, it, you know, I just think we're going to be tying up money that we're not going to be able to use and maybe looking at it at the end of the year, or go eight months into it and decide that we're going to change direction, and then we go to this board or go to a special town meeting or something, and then, and, you know, do a transfer.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I know we've discussed this as, for several years, but what is the board's, I mean, I'll share mine, I, I tend to side with the planning board on going down the road of a full-time town planner. I know we've wanted to do that for several years. I'm just wondering what the rest of the board, what are your thoughts on that?
I haven't done nearly enough research to answer that intelligently. I mean, I, not as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I want to be able to, I haven't seen both sides of the argument yet.
Well, I think in a perfect world, we would have a town planner, we'd have an HR person, we'd have everything, but it's certainly not going to be in the budget for everything this year, and I want to see these projects get started. Downtown, we've been talking about that for several years. Route 18, like you said, now to the bases. Hopefully, we finally have someone in that's, that's going to develop the base. We need to do something with our zoning on Route 18. So, and if Rockland had hired a planner, I'd be more optimistic that we could. I know a planner that is in a town, you know, 30, 45 minutes from here, and she's leaving as a planner and doesn't want to do it anymore, you know? So, I mean, she's not even applying anywhere else, she just wants to get out of it. So, I think it's going to be difficult, but in an ideal world, I'd love to have a full-time planner. I'm just not sure that it's going to happen.
No, I understand, I'm just wonder, I'm, just because Rockland can't get someone, I don't think we shouldn't, we shouldn't try to move forward for, I mean, I, I understand there's probably some difficulty, obviously, but just because Rockland can't find someone doesn't mean that we can't be successful.
I'm not going to disagree with you on that, but I can tell you, all the four communities that are working on this has a mitigation plan. I'm representing a planning department, and Easton has somebody there, planner economic developer. East Bridgewater is using their town administrator, and Stoughton is using an admin from the fire department.
Okay, that's valuable information. Thank you.
It's risky to have $85,000 sitting there that we can't, if we vote that as part of the budget.
And that's.
Like I said, I couldn't tell you without looking at the rest of the budget, because would I love to have a planner? Yeah, definitely, but.
Yeah.
But if we vote that in, then what, what's coming out of the budget, right?
Correct.
So, without all that information to make a decision right now and say?
Well, I think we need to see the whole budget.
Exactly.
Before we can do that, but I'd like to get going on these projects, too, so. Anything else?
That, well, before I leave you, I just wanted to let you know, the 3A or MBTA communities, we did receive a grant for consulting, technical assistance, and O'Callaghan, the planning council is providing that, so she has reached out to me with a few things, so we really just started, but I want you guys to be aware this is going on, and it's, it's probably not going to be the prettiest thing we've ever seen, the state's requiring us to kind of absorb a lot of housing in an area where we have a lot of housing. So, I just want you guys to keep it, we're going to do the best we can to maybe look at options and maybe see if we can overlay someplace else, because they are allowing a little flexibility. So, that's why we have a technical assistance, and they can do up to four options for us, so I plan on having them do all four.
I'll land on their airbase in proximity to the Weymouth train station.
I put that in our, so we have to be compliant every year, and I filled out our compliance report, and I added that, right? We have land near their train station. The problem is, it's their train station. So, yeah, I think they're looking to us to do over 1,000 units.
And that was something someone brought up to me, someone at one point had talked about a project over off Brockton Ave, and could we use the Brockton train station, and we were told no.
I don't know enough about it because a lot of it shifted and changed.
Yeah.
It's all in place now, so.
I don't want to not speak intelligently on it, but I believe there is a way we can do a percentage of it, is kind of flexible, and it wouldn't have to necessarily be right near the train station, but some of it is going to have to be. So, I just want everybody to be aware of that, that that's going to start rolling, and we'll have public hearings, and, you know, obviously, keep Scott in the loop, and he can keep you guys in the loop moving forward.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senior Center Operational Update from our new.
Newest.
Newest Department. Amy Barrett.
Hello, I'm Amy Barrett. I don't know if I've met all of you in person, but it's nice to meet you all. So, I've been a Medicare specialist down at the senior center for almost 10 years, and I was appointed interim director in November and got the permanent position January, middle of January. So, I have put together the budget, really no changes, we're looking to restore a couple of positions, but given what I know, what I went through with my representatives, I feel like our department in particular is going to be mainly restoring a couple of old positions that we kind of lost along the way, so that we can kind of just get back to ground level, get up and running again, so really no. We had a couple of little changes from one line to another line, but nothing extra at all.
So, yeah, I mean, what, what you're saying is, she's looking to restore positions, but it's all within your existing budget?
All within the existing budget.
So, she's not looking for any increase to do this?
I was just going to ask.
What are the positions?
So, we are looking for somebody to be at the front desk, who is actually there now, a transportation person. We brought somebody in, she's been volunteering for five or six weeks, and so now she's at the desk, and it's just a position that the girl that was there, actually was Amanda, had a baby, and then decided to drive school buses, so we needed somebody to fill the position. And we had people doing a couple of different jobs, doing some things, filling in in that position, but it's not really a position to fill in at, because we don't want to miss anything. That's a position where sometimes a person's only form of transportation gets scheduled through that desk, so we want to make sure someone's there all the time. So, Cheryl Ames started volunteering, like I said, five or six weeks ago, so now she's there.
That's awesome.
She's awesome, they're awesome, everyone down there. Everyone's working really hard, everyone is wearing a couple different hats, but we're actually doing great. The whole place is running well, you know, Liz stole the surprise about the generator, but it's a super big, exciting thing that we have going on there, because now the building will be 100% generated, cooling, heating, charging, the whole thing, so that'll be really important for this community. And I believe part of that came from that earmark grant, yeah.
Scott?
He's correct.
Questions for Amy?
How was your new role? Do you like it?
It's, it's great. Everything's going really great. It was nice to come out of that, like I said, I've been doing Medicare for almost 10 years, so once I came out of there and started moving around and seeing all the things that we potentially could do down there, it's been great. We've got a lot of really exciting things happening down there, and people are happy. Things, new programming, lots of new programming, lots of new participants. We had 86 people sign up in four weeks that have never been in that building before in the last four weeks. Yeah.
That's awesome.
It's really exciting, yeah.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Well, you need anything, we must let us know.
Oh, you know I will.
Yeah.
You know I will.
Except money, we don't, we don't need any money.
No, but we're doing great. So, for right now, we're doing good, and I think that if we can get back up to ground level, just get that position restored, get up and running, I think that we'll be doing great down there.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Mr. Stone. Public Works Operational Update and FY '24 Budget Overview.
Can I get a fastie there?
Sure.
Have the laptop.
Can you handle the laptop?
Yeah. Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Just a overview of what we have going on right now. Answers any questions you might have. I'll run through it real fast. Any questions, just interrupt me, feel free, then I'll get to the budget after that. So.
We both do it, but?
Okay. Do you want me to do it after this?
Yeah, we don't have to do line by line.
No, I wasn't going to do that. I was just going to run through this real fast, not waste your time, and that's that.
See, I said, I.
You did it first.
Yeah, I was.
I have to call my IT. Anyway, on our, budget-wise, we're asking for one position, laborer, and that's pretty much it. We bumped up our electricity line item some, especially in the sewers department because of the rising costs, and we bumped, thank you, Kelly, bumped up our natural gas in the sewers department due to the rising costs. So, here we go. I was going to start with the bridges. A lot of people have questions about the Central Street Bridge, the town-approved funding for rehab back in 2020 in the amount, in the amount of $890,000. The state gave it a rating of three on a scale of one to 10, which is pretty bad. If it gets to a two, they could actually shut the bridge down. These are pictures taken by the state in their latest inspection, can't really, they're better in color, but I think you get the gist of it. This is the bidding for the construction of the project. New England Building and Bridge Company was awarded the bid in the amount of $712,000. Construction's going to start in April, and we're going to have to shut the bridge down for 18 weeks. They have to be done by November, by contract.
So, police and you guys will have to go out the other way?
We'll have to go around. I talked to the fire and the, and the police, they're going to have to seek alternate routes. We don't have another choice.
Yeah.
You know.
Completely shut down?
The state could shut us down, they've done it to other, other towns.
What about trucks trying to get in that can't get under the railroad bridge?
They're going to have to seek alternate routes. Everyone's going to have to seek alternate.
If I could get to the DPW in 18 Willow.
Uh, Park Street, Park Ave.
Park Ave, drive through the cemetery?
Going to have to.
Figure something out. You're saying the whole bridge is going to be shut down?
Yes.
Both lanes?
Both lanes for 18 weeks, unless they do it faster.
When's it getting shut down?
April or May. It's not ideal, there's nothing good about it, but it has to be done. According to our engineer and, and the contract that you would, New England Building a Bridge, there's no way to shut down, shut it down partially, it's too narrow.
Yeah.
So, we'll have to live with it for 18 weeks, and hopefully they get it done faster.
And it's, it'll be the same width and everything?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yep. It'll have 10 new beams, new deck, new railings, new sidewalks, and we'll get rid of those stupid cones that have been sitting on it.
What's the life expectancy?
You go what, like 20 years?
50 years.
Yeah?
Yeah, 50 years.
How old is this one now?
I believe it's, it was rehabbed once back in 80s, the 80s, I believe.
Okay.
Not a total rehab, not a total rebuild, but the, the beams are gone. As you can see, this rebar showing, a lot of problems with it. Center Ave Bridge, another state inspection gave this one a grade of four, there's the picture of it down below. We received a grant in the amount of $100,000 for design under the state's Small Bridge Program. We, we began design on the bridge itself, and we'll be applying for construction funds through the state's Small Bridge Program, save the taxpayers money. Central Street, actually, it's not considered a small bridge. It's not, but Center Ave is. It doesn't, it looks, it looks backwards, but it's true. It doesn't, it looks, it looks backwards, but it's true. Here's the inspection for the Center Ave Bridge. Here's some pictures. There's the construction estimate. And now we go to intersections. These are some of the other projects we have coming up. This is the, this is, this study was performed by Old Colony Planner Council, I believe, in 2021 or 2020 and it lists all the Avington Intersections that are most dangerous. So as you can see, the intersection of Randolph and Chestnut itself is the most dangerous. The intersection of Chestnut and Hancock is the third most dangerous. So I think Hancock and Chestnut Street Intersection, we, we got on the state's TIP program, Transportation Improvement Program for an amount, the amount of $5,300,000 for federal year 2026 to construct a roundabout at Hancock and Chestnut. This is what it's going to look like. It's going to be a roundabout and we're going to shave down the Hancock Street Hill and build up the intersection itself so it's less severe of a slope. I think the, I think that'll be good for everybody and it'll accommodate pedestrians better, bicyclists better and cars better. It's the third most dangerous intersection in town and I don't, I don't think I have to tell anyone here, there's a lot of accidents there.
Has this moved further down the tip list since last time or?
No, it's been, Kevin, it's been 2026. We're hoping we bump up, you know, there's always the opportunity that another town might not be ready for construction and they slip off and we could slide into that slot, but it hasn't happened yet, but we're hopeful.
Are we ready for this?
We're ready.
We're ready to go.
25% design.
So there's no holdbacks on our end.
Right. We're ready to go. Intersection of Chestnut Street and Old Randolph, this is the most dangerous intersection in town and we were just able to get this on the state's Transportation Improvement Program in the amount of 3.7 million. There it is. There's the actual tip list. This came right off the tip list. The only problem with this is we don't have a year yet for this. We're waiting patiently to get a year. But they did approve it. They approved the project, so that's good.
Would this go faster because of the, the rating of the dangerousness in town or no?
No.
Would we make it move up the list other than towns not being ready?
Another one falling out.
Okay.
Brad, if any additional monies that are put towards transportation.
That too.
Transportation bond bill and those things that never got finalized last year could end up pushing forward.
Believe it or not, these are, these are considered small projects. 3.7 million for this one and five whatever for Hancock and, and Chestnut Street, they're considered small.
Are we going to do anything else with those on the town side, like any streets, are we going to try to repave, resurface streets around these when we do them or?
We just did chest, the smaller portion of Chestnut not too long ago. We did Hancock Street. So I don't think there's anything really there we need to do.
Okay.
But everything else is covered up, covered through the tip grant. So there's really, the town will be on the hook for nothing. And this was another grant we received through the state's Safe Streets Program. It's a grant that come out, a program that come out last year. This particular street here is, we have people driving the wrong way down Old Randolph. I'm sure you guys are aware of it if you could, and so we're going to tighten up the intersection so it appears like it's a one-way. Right now it looks like a, looks like a two-way. If you're driving on Thicket, it looks like you can take a right.
But it's you back to where you wanted.
It, it, yeah, it makes you nat, and we have signage up there. We have, the road is marked, do not enter, no matter what we do up there. People still drive the wrong way down that street. So this is going to tighten up the intersection. It's going to include a crosswalk. It's going to include radar feedback sign, like if you're going too fast, it will blink, like one of them type of signs.
Okay.
So this is a $200,000 grant we got, so.
How long will that take to do that project?
We'll, we'll have it done by, I would say, summer.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say summer. There's the letter that we received. Richard D. Ambrosia is the award and bidder for that particular intersection. We were awarded $199,000, the lowest bidder came in at 202, so we'll have to come up with a couple thousand dollars. Sewer Force Main is completely installed and running with no issues at all. Very successful project. The roads have been paved. We're just waiting on the pumps. New pumps will power the project, but like everything else, it's taken forever. Eight, nine months. Hopefully we get them soon. We were awarded this grant recently through the state's Complete Streets Program in the amount of $495,000. It's going to include 2,000 feet of granite curved sidewalk from the first entrance of Beaver Brook on the south side to Adams, or I should say Lanter, Lanter Lane, I believe. It's going to, so it's going to include 2,000 feet of granite curved sidewalks and a bike path, the entire length of Washington in the green right there. So this was a grant in the amount of 500 through the state's Complete Street Program. So that'll be taking place soon.
Will that be this summer?
We don't have the design money yet, Alex. We're trying, we're hopeful to get it through Opera or the town meeting. And once we get that, then we'll go through the bidding process and, and we'll go out to bid.
Is there one sidewalk there or is it two?
We got awarded a grant for one.
One side?
Yeah, on some portions there are two sides, two sidewalks, one on either side.
But this will run in front of the Frolio?
This will run in front of the Frolio with 2,000 feet of granite curving and a bike lane, the entire path
Awesome.
of Washington. So it's going to look good when it's done. We just need to get the money. These grants don't include design, so we got to come up with the design money if we want to. The five, half a million dollar grant. So usually it's 15%.
What's the timeframe on this project?
Once we get the design money, I don't think it will take too long. You know, we'd have to go out to bid and once the winning bidder was awarded, I would say, I don't know, I don't know if it'll be done this summer or next summer. They can't really do it in the winter.
Yeah.
So my guess would be summer of 2024 on this one. That'll be my guess.
And I'm going to probably ask you guys to open up the warrant because we did not, we were hoping to use just the Opera money to fund the design for this, but.
$70,000.
But in not realizing that going through Plymouth County and using their Opera money because this is going to be in conjunction with current money through the state, we would require town meeting approval for it. So we're going to, Andrew and I are kind of trying to figure it out if that's the only way to do it and I'll bring it up at our next, before our next meeting.
And we have time.
We do.
To the next meeting.
Yep. This project is also going to include our new ADA compliant curb ramps, which we don't have right now. I think it'll be a good project for the town.
Yeah, and this is part of our overall.
Yeah.
Project in, in our overall multi-phase project where we're, we're going to have, you know, accessibility through walking sidewalks and bike trails from one side of the town right up and, and they've already cut the corner which way piece in there and we're hoping to have all grants that are going to work this way back out to Hancock Street and down to Enzo Hall.
Let's see what else we have. That's just the letter, award letter. This is the estimate of construction costs. In case you guys want to see it. This is a list of roads we'd like to pave in FY '24. Lower Washington near Trukey's. I call, I call it Lower Washington as opposed to Upper Washington and Mid Washington. I have my own names wrong. But it's near Trukey's and then these other streets here listed.
From Adam Street to Bedford Street.
Correct, correct. That small portion of Shaw, Shaw Ave as well. These other streets that are listed right here.
While we're on that, if I can interrupt you, I know we talked about redoing Adam and Washington Street before that.
Intersection.
Intersection. I think we all got an email from a resident recently. Whatever happened to that when we looked at that?
We had a road safety audit. It was before Scott's time.
Right.
We had a road safety audit and they came up with a few suggestions. Old Colony Planner Council come up with a few suggestions, but the police chief and the fire chief didn't want it. They didn't think it was necessary. So it never came to fruition.
That's something we really need to look at though.
That intersection's not even on your list of dangerous intersections.
I know. And I remember the chief, the, the police chief at the time said that the crash data is low there and I, I don't know.
Yeah.
This was probably five years ago.
Yeah, you and I talked about it years ago.
This was five years ago. I had the road safety audit itself.
Yeah, if you could get that to us.
Yeah.
So we could take a look at it.
Yeah, we, I'll, I'll email it to Scott.
Yeah.
He can email it to all you guys.
Yeah, I'm sure you guys all got that email.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
I think there's an easy fix if you guys want to do it.
Yeah, I think so too. Something like on Monroe to Plymouth.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Exactly.
You should really look at that though. I mean, it's.
It wouldn't be a lot of money.
Driving through there, you can.
I don't think so.
That would be good.
I, I think we need to look at, into that.
Okay.
Alright.
I'll email Scott the road safety audit. Thank you, Jeanie.
She's on it.
She's on it. This is the road rating list that we do every year. I'm not going to get into all that right now unless you guys have any particular questions. But we're making progress on some of the roads thanks to Scott and this board and the finance committee allocating money to pave roads aside from Chapter 90. The state gives us about $400,000 a year, but it doesn't go very far. And with Scott and the finance committee and you guys, we're making progress and we'd like to continue to do so.
How much are you getting this year?
I think it's always the same, Alex, $390,000, $390,000 and with the price of oil, it doesn't, it doesn't go very far.
And we're, we're looking at priming about a half a billion through the Plymouth County Recovery Plan Act 12. And matter of fact, there's an article in the Act for that and basically, you know, we want to look at all of our stormwater on the land and make sure that we're complying with that and, and basins and then obviously we'll have to pave all that over on top of it. Yeah, I, I think it's important that we keep, as John said, funding this from everywhere and other to make sure that we're getting ahead of the game.
Every other town does. Every other city in town supplements Chapter 90. We can't live on Chapter 90 alone.
Right.
I know some years we might not be able to, but for the most part, I think it almost needs to be part of the budget. I know we can't do it every year or whatever, but it has to be part of the capital plan.
And while we're on it, if you could, by the pump and station on Brockton Ave, somebody called me today and complained there's a huge pothole there now. So if you can get the state to.
Yep. That, Jeanie, thank you.
That was that picture you had up there, right?
Yes, that was it.
A truck's still there. It's stuck.
We were notified a couple of months back that the state started a program of resurfacing state numbered but town owned roads and Route 139 was chosen. They're going to resurface 139 from Route 18 to the Weymouth Line. So it will save the taxpayers an eventual couple million dollars someday, even though it's not, you know, in dire need of it right now, but someday will be.
It was done not too long ago, was it?
Probably 12 years, Alex. I would say 12 years ago. But it will save the taxpayers a lot of money. So that's good. That's good news. That's supposed to take place before July. So that road will be, a lot of construction there.
That's going to be horrible. The traffic there, ready.
And there's the letter for that. If you guys have any interest in it, snow and ice. We haven't plowed yet this year, but I think we've gone out 19 times. And here's the list of the, the days we went out and the amount of salt we've, we've used and things of that nature. I don't know if you guys have any questions or.
What do the numbers next to the salt, what does that signify?
How many times we went out.
Okay.
On that particular day.
Gotcha.
So 98 is our deficit number?
98 is our deficit number, yes.
It'll change tomorrow.
It'll change tonight. It'll change at 11:00. So that's that. In the fleet list, again, we're, we're making some headway, some progress with our, our fleet.
Is that our new selectmen trucks on the right?
They're on back order.
Right in the middle. Supply chain, right?
But that's our, to the left is our new hot box for potholes and the thing's awesome. The, the guys love it. The middle picture is our new sidewalk machine. We ordered it in July. Still haven't seen it yet except February, but no. And the Ford pickup utility truck, no sign of that either. Everything's on back order. But we appreciate the support from the finance committee, Scott and this board for recognizing the fact that we were in rough shape fleet wise, but we are making headway now. Thank you.
Did you fix the timing on that sidewalk machine to stop coming by as soon as I finish shoveling my driveway? Every time without fail, every time. And he just smiles and waves. He knows what he's doing. He knows what he's doing.
But so far this year, we've surplus some old equipment due to the new stuff that we're getting and we've received $41,000 in, in funding for selling off surplus vehicles. So that's good. There's our fleet list. Anything in green is over 20 years old. Anything in blue is over 15 years old. I'm not going to bore you guys with the particulars. There's our new bucket truck. Again, thank you to you guys and Scott and the finance committee for getting that for us. It was you, we purchased it used for $65,000. And we use it a lot.
Is that a lot larger than the previous truck?
It is. Things, yeah, the thing's a beast.
That's awesome.
It is awesome. The guys love it. But thank you. Here's our sewer rate survey that we try to show you guys every year. It shows where we stand in the midst of other sewer, sewerwood communities. That's based on 90,000 gallons a year. And we are 44th out of 60 on participating communities. These are communities that participated in the MWRA survey. They put a survey out every year. This is the list of communities that participated. That's where we stand. Pretty good. That's a credit to the Board of Sewer Commissioners. All you guys, I think you guys are aware of the new stormwater laws that took effect in 2016. These are some of the best management practices that we have to go through this year to comply with permit. There's a list, there is the list inside this packet if you, if you guys want to breeze through it at any point. And that's about it. Oh, here's a DPW workforce by town. This is one reason why we'd like another laborer. As you can see, we're pretty low in the workforce department compared to other towns. We're at 16. We'd like to bump that up over time.
Are we, Rich Ward is at 22?
That's correct.
Wow. Hanover is 46?
Yes.
Jesus. These things would be like sparkling clean our streets. That'd be awesome.
Definitely. We're not asking for anything close to that, but a couple would be good.
And this, for everyone's information, this is just your department, sewer and DPW. This isn't water or anything like that.
No, it's sewer, grounds, highway.
Right.
Just ours. No water, no nothing.
Right.
We got plenty of empty fields and buildings to maintain, so.
Yes, we do.
You know.
So Hanover's 46, for example, that constant water department?
In some instances, it may, but in some instances, a lot of these towns don't have grounds to take care of. A lot of them don't have sewer. We have 70 miles of sewer pipe, 13 pump stations, 5,500 customers. So that's where we stand.
You're literally the second lowest on this list, right?
That's right, Kevin.
Dover is the only other town with less than us and they have almost 10,000 less residents.
That's correct.
Wow.
It's a credit to the staff, the staff that's sitting over there and all the staff that we have, will be out tonight.
There, yeah.
It's a credit to them. I'm very lucky.
It's amazing to see the numbers in front of you like that. That's, that's low.
Any questions? Thank you, John. Keep up the good work.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it. Talk to them.
And you too, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to skip over number five? Alright. Request for approval to host a 5K fun run on behalf of the Runway for Recovery on Saturday, May. Uh, request for approval to host a five K fun run on behalf of the Runway for Recovery on Saturday, May thirteenth. Is anyone here for that? Would you like to come up and introduce yourself? I did read your letter.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name's Valerie Campbell. Um, I'm an Abington resident, live at eighty Strawberry Lane. Um, and I work for a nonprofit called Runway for Recovery. It is a breast cancer nonprofit that, um, funds families who have been faced with, uh, terminal breast cancer diagnosis. Or have lost a parent or guardian to breast cancer. Um, I've been working with them for, it'll be two years in July. The organization itself is based on the North Shore in Newburyport, but we serve all of New England. And, um, one of the things that we're looking to do is really expand our reach, um, to the South Shore and other areas. And one of the thoughts was to host a five K fun run, um, as a fundraiser. We, I'm sure most everybody knows someone who's been affected by breast cancer. It's very prominent. Um, one in eight women are diagnosed. I personally am also a breast cancer survivor, was diagnosed in twenty sixteen. Um, at the age of thirty-five with two young kids, and so this organization has become very near and dear to my heart. Because of the fact that we, um, specifically aim to, uh, improve children's lives. Who have been in fact affected by a diagnosis within the family. Um, and so what we're hoping to do is host, um, a fun run, um, and/or walk. Um, on the Saturday before Mother's Day. We chose that date as, um, purposefully, you know, as a way to honor, um, moms who have been lost. As well as the moms who are still here, like myself. Um, and, um, we're hoping to do something similar to what the Jeff Coombs, um, foundation has done. Um, use the Woodsdale, um, uh, back lot for, um, potentially some vendors. Um, DJ music, um, bouncy house for children. Um, we're hoping to partner with Race Wire to, um, help us with registration and the management of the run. Um, and I have spoken with Sergeant Lynch at APD, um, and he has said that they are on board with, um, helping out for this event. And so what we'd love to do is, um, you know, apply for whatever permits need to be done. Um, to have this event hosted, um, and hopefully have your approval.
Okay, so we do have, um, letters from John Stone. Uh, he's, has no issues with this. Have you spoken to the police chief?
I've not spoken to the police chief. I spoke with Sergeant Lynch.
Yeah, I did speak with him this afternoon, and he did assign it to Sergeant Lynch. They're not worried about the part, you know.
So they're good with it? I, I have, uh, no questions.
The only other person that she just walked out was to reach out, maybe Kelly. I don't, are they using the Woodsdale baseball field this year?
Um, I, John Stone had already looked at it, so I'm assuming that they did double check that, but I.
As long as he had that in mind, just no conflicts.
Yeah, John did say he had no issues with it, but that might be a good, uh, you know, just to be aware so everyone can park there.
Okay.
So, um, and then obtain a motion if there's no questions.
I, I just want to say beforehand, I, I lost my mother two years ago to breast cancer. Um, and, uh, one of my friends, a close friend, Marissa, who, they opened up Marissa's Mission.
Yes, I'm very familiar with them.
So grew up with her and brain tree, lifelong friend, so, you know, thank you for everything you do, and thank you for doing this, because it really does impact and help. And, uh, I've seen it with people I've grown up with a brain tree that have received money from Marissa's Mission to go, so I really appreciate that.
I have to say, as, um, as a young mom that had breast cancer, um, you know, it's difficult to sort of find. Other women in, um, you know, my age group who understood. Um, 'cause it is still perceived as an older woman's disease. Um, but I have to give props to social media. Um, I was able to connect with a lot of young moms. Several of which are Abington moms who have, um, also had breast cancer. And we've been able to, um, you know, sort of create our own community. And so I know that there are several people in town who would be happy to be involved, um, who have also been affected.
That's awesome. Um, I'd make the motion to approve, um, approval to host a five K run on behalf of Runway for Recovery on Saturday. May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? The ayes have it. So if you get us some, uh, information, I'm sure the town will share it on our Facebook page.
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
And, um, see what we can do to help you do.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, vote to appoint, uh, myself, Adam Gunn, Lindsey Wright, and Amy Barrett to the opioid settlement fund allocation committee. Uh, we did receive another application today. But I think, uh, we would have to do, we're calling it at our next meeting, 'cause our policies say. That we have to receive the application on the Wednesday before our meeting of appointment. So, um, is there a motion on that or any discussion?
So we table on this?
No, we're gonna appoint everyone except the new applicant that came in today.
How many are on this committee?
It will be one, two, three, four, and then the new.
So that, there was one open spot?
Yeah, well, there really isn't a set number on it. Um, but I think five would be a good number, and then Scott will be, um, on it also, basically.
Alex, sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure. Come up to the microphone, please.
Don't have to say my name and everything?
Yes, you do.
Melissa Cook, three fifty-eight High Street. So is this, I probably, I feel like I know the answer, but I have to ask. This is not gonna make it onto the town meeting for April.
No, we haven't even had a meeting yet, so.
Yeah.
Um, Scott and I have talked about this, and I think the way, and I spoke with Amy the other day also. Um, and I think I spoke with Adam, but I think the way we envision this is something similar to the, um, community. Community preservation committee, where people would apply through an application process for funds. And then it would have to go to town meeting to be approved, the same as CPA funds.
So when is the next town meeting? I just like, people need our help, the kids need our help, so I have to.
It's possible that you do something at, at the special.
And the fall.
But I think, I think tech, I think after that, um, it would probably be annual.
Annual town meetings.
So there's like fifty-two thousand that, you know, came in.
I don't know what it is.
I kinda know the numbers, and then thirty thou, thirty-something thousand will be coming in the next year, so that. So we're gonna be looking at like eighty-something thousand. Is that right?
There's currently over eighty thousand in there right now.
Cause we got more, uh, from a different source also.
Oh, yeah.
A Walmart or a Walgreens.
Well, we haven't received that yet, but we did receive, we received, there's two different, um, settlement. One of them gave, made a, like a four-year payment, whatever it is. So that would, that one alone was a seventy thousand dollar payment, and then we had received an allocation of twenty something. So there's, there's close to a hundred thousand. And there'll be money coming in every year, and there are other, um, other companies that, uh, settling. Um, will probably receive funds from them also.
Yeah, I just received an email. There's a meeting like next Tuesday, a Zoom meeting, 'cause more people are settling or whatever. So, so, okay, so we're gonna have to wait till October, pretty much.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Because it has to be approved by town meeting.
Right, I was just hoping, obviously, for April, because like I said, people need our help.
Yeah, and we do, absolutely, but we do need to follow the guidelines on how we can use the money, um, how we can allocate the money. And then I think we need to actually, you know, we need to, as, as a group, decide what our processes are gonna be. What our policies are gonna be towards it, and a- as much as we wanna get it out there, we wanna make sure we get it out there and do it right.
Right.
Um, so we're gonna, now that this is going to get formed, um, they'll start meeting, and I think, you know. You know, we'll open it up as soon as possible on, on how groups can get their funds.
Okay, 'cause I've said.
We don't wanna delay it either.
No, I know.
Not at all.
I want the money now.
I know.
Um, so I, like I said, I've sat on multiple meetings about this, so will that be able to catch? Kinda everybody else that's gonna be on the committee up to what it's supposed to be used for? Cause like I have like lists and everything.
Yeah, as do we, and we have, but it will be open meetings. Um, they'll probably be held, uh, you know, during the day. But there will be meetings and people will be invited to attend them, so.
And there'll be public meetings that anyone can attend, and you can certainly attend.
Okay, I'm not trying to sound like a know-it-all.
No, no, I, I understand you, yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, Scott sent us the guidelines, uh, recently. I think we all got them, so.
And my guess is our first meeting will probably have town council with us to review them, um, and give everybody sort of our ground rules. On, on how we wanna do this and make sure that we're doing it right.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
We'll let you know when the meeting's gonna be.
I'll be calling you.
All right.
We'll, we'll have it posted on the website too. It might make it easier than calling, yeah, Alex. But you can call me, call my office.
So only four people applied for this until today?
Nobody, nobody asked.
Was it posted?
Yes, quite a bit.
And it, and what, what was that, the closing day for posting was Wednesday?
Uh, we're actually keeping an open.
We're keeping, yeah, but we did receive one today, an application today.
Is it not posted as the name of it? Is that what it is? Has it typed in on here?
He put it as other.
As other, but I'm just wondering if we should table this the next meeting, just post it, and then do this all the next meeting?
Posted. This, this is on our website for months now. We've mentioned it at these meetings for quite some time.
And you're not, you're not closing it?
I'm not looking to close it.
I just haven't been online.
We're not looking to close it, but we wanna start the process, and, and, and my thought was, um, we have folks. People on our staff, um, people that we've identified, that we've asked, that I've asked to be on this committee. Um, and I think that they're probably best people that I know right now that are suited to be on this committee. And we haven't had anybody other than that ask to be on this committee until today. But I do know that we need to get this up and running and working.
I, I guess that just threw me off, 'cause it's listed as other. So I just, I mean, there's not an actual title on the website showing it?
Yeah, you'll have to ask the fellow in the back.
Mr. Collins?
I don't know.
I didn't see it, but Scott's saying it.
Okay. I mean, what do we?
So, so there's no set number, so you're gonna keep allowing applications if somebody else wants to be on in?
Yeah, I think until we actually get, um, uh, uh, this group started and organized and come up with some sort of, um.
Guidelines.
Mission statement and guideline that, you know, then we can even bring back to this committee for, for review. That might be helpful.
Sure. And how long's this appointment gonna be for if we?
This is going to be a long, I think, I think again, I think these appointments are to get us started and, and to get some ground rules. But I think you're right, I think that we have to come up with a plan. I think there should always probably be a selectman appointee on here. Um, and I think, I like the idea of having at least these staff folks always being involved. But yeah, at some point you may wanna, um, set dates that, you know, each appointment will be a three-year term or.
So these, okay. I think I'm more confused now than when this started. I was trying to get the site up, but it keeps on saying. Failed, but, okay.
So I'll make the motion that we appoint. So we're appointing the people, I'm sorry, we're appointing, 'cause you're right, Scott, this isn't the first time it's been brought up, but I'm thinking of all these questions now. We're putting, we're appointing these people as people, not their positions.
Correct.
So when, when you fire Amy tomorrow.
If, if I'm understanding.
Amy is not getting fired.
No, Adam's, that goes without saying.
If I'm understanding correctly, you haven't had any volunteers, it's been opened, and you need to get your butts going.
Exactly.
So you're having this committee so you can at least start deciding on things.
I can't read.
Correct.
Yeah, it's up to you. Perfect.
But I just want to know what I'm voting for.
It's been on the website, opioid settlement fund allocation committee.
So there's four more spots? Or no?
No.
No, we haven't appointed anybody yet, so there will be no more spots or one more spot. But I, I think right now, you've got.
What if, what if we, I'll do it this way, hold on. I'll make a motion to appoint Alex Bezance and Adam Gunn, Lindsey Wright, and Amy Barrett. To the opioid settlement fund allocation committee, uh, pending any other volunteers or volunteers volunteering.
They were voluntold, so.
That's what I'm asking, I mean, is it residence, like four residence spots, or, I mean, are these gonna be like town spots put on there? Town and residence, or is it just, we're just tying up?
If, if, if all of a sudden we get four people who wanna be on there, I will bring that to this board. But right now, and for, this has been up there for quite some time.
I think you probably will.
Mentioned it several times at our meetings too, and nobody has applied. Like Melissa said, other towns are already starting to allocate these funds, so I'd really like to get it going as soon as we can.
I just wanna know what I'm voting for. I, I'm not arguing the validity of the group or the process. I mean, that's fine. I did have a question about the process only 'cause he put, clicked other. I wanna make sure it's up there. That's fine.
Yeah, it's up there, that's good. It's just.
But I, I still don't even know what I'm voting for. Am I voting for the person? How long?
Are we doing terms?
Are there any policies?
You're voting for the person, and it is, um, they will be on this committee until otherwise.
Appointments?
Until otherwise decided.
And I like, I mean.
Cause you said we should have a selectman representative, but now we don't.
We don't?
Not if we're voting for Alex and not the position, 'cause now what if Alex doesn't win election?
You put somebody else on, just so like Mike is, Mike is your representative to.
So then we're just adding a per, another person?
So we're adding a person?
So Alex would stay on, then we would add Mike?
Now we get rid of Alex in a heartbeat.
Alex would have to be removed.
This is a type of commi, how many are on the community preservation, you know?
I don't know. I do know that I.
But it's not a, um, you know, it's not like conservation zoning where we're mandated how many people we have to have. I think if we had five people apply between now and the next meeting, I'd gladly let them join, you know? Um, I have no problem with that. Uh, it's not gonna happen, I don't think. Well, you and I have been talking for six months and it hasn't happened yet, right?
So there's no number spots? Technically, there's not, there's four spots on this website, so we should take the four off and just write open? Cause it's not four spots, it's, we're gonna put anyone on, basically.
I'd make a motion. We make this the town manager appointed committee.
Sounds like it already is.
What do you think, Mike? What was your motion again?
Three-year terms.
Just the, those people until such time.
Do it for one year.
Okay, fine, yeah.
One year.
Yeah, do it for one year. We'll see what we get over the next year, and then we could do it for a staggered three-year terms if you want, whatever.
I would like to do it for one year. Uh, that's fine, I'll vote for that for one year. But I, I'd like to see some policy. If you guys wanna set the policy.
Let it get going and see what.
Appointments are staggered like every other committee week. You set up, okay, there's always gonna be one member of the board of health and one member of the selectman, whatever you guys wanna do.
I think that's the way to do it.
This is not a selectman member, this is just.
No, these are, we're voting for the people for one year.
So they're all just Re, Abington residents that we're appointing? We're not.
No, they're not Abington residents or employees. They wanted to do.
Residents or employees?
Sorry, I have another question. So that you don't have to be an Abington resident?
What's that?
You don't have to be an Abington resident? No?
No, it's not unusual to have employees on committees.
No.
Well, we're, we're saying two of our employees, department heads that we want on this are not Abington residents, but they are employees.
That's not, in our policies and procedures for the selectmen, that we have, there was a push at one point to make sure, to make that all board members. And committee members were Abington residents, but that, that never went through. So no, there's no policy stating that a board member has to be. So no, there's no policy stating that a board member has to be an Abington resident. We, I, I mean, me personally prefer it, but if there's qualified people in, outside of town and nobody in town willing, then.
Just to the one year, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion to appoint these four people.
Four people to the Opi- Opioid Settlement Fund Allocation Committee for a term of one year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is that unanimous?
Yeah. I said aye.
Okay, um. I would now like to introduce Charles Pizerski. Come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Would you like to be on the opioid committee?
Plenty of seats.
Wise move. Why don't you introduce yourself to us and tell us why you're here?
Uh, my name is Charlie Pizerski. I am an Eagle Scout candidate with Troop Forty-One here in Abington, and I am, uh, requesting your approval to, uh, move forward and start with my Eagle Scout project. So my project is replacing and refurbishing two benches here at Abington Town Hall. Uh, one of the benches is going to be completely replaced. We're just gonna buy a new one and put it in. Uh, the second bench, we are planning on refurbishing it. We're gonna sand it down, polish it with some teak oil. And it also has a, um, a plaque dedicated to a veteran and former veteran agent, Joseph Collantino, that I'm gonna remake and redesign a new plaque to tell more of a story about Joe. And, um, there's gonna, we're gonna put a QR code on the plaque to, a link to a video that we're gonna record and broadcast at the fundraiser. And we're gonna have, uh, Joe's friends and fellow veterans come and tell like stories with and about Joe. Just to, you, you can only put so much on a plaque, so that'll help tell more of his story.
Joe was a great, great guy.
I've, I've heard a lot about him since I've started. Yes, is, is there any questions?
There's just gonna be in the same spot they are now?
Yes.
That's a great project and a great thing to do. Appreciate you, uh, taking us on.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
So do we need a vote on this?
Yeah, you should probably vote, however long it may take, um, to allow him to do this project for you.
I'll make a motion to.
Abington residents?
Sorry. I'll make a motion to, uh, grant permission for, uh, Charles Pizerski's Eagle Scout project.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there something you wanted to, um, push?
Something else you wanted to announce?
Invite people to?
Oh, yes, the fundraiser. March twelfth at the American Legion, four-thirty to six-thirty. It's gonna be a pasta dinner. Uh, twelve dollars per person, forty dollars for four people.
Well, you have a vegan option.
We can make something.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And that is, uh, March twelfth, you said?
Charles, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
What time did you say it was?
Uh, four-thirty to six-thirty.
Okay. It's in the calendar.
What'll be left in store on the town manager's report?
Nothing. Unfortunately, there's very little to report as I was away last week. Um, however.
But you did bring your phone and your, your laptop with you.
And I would never show you any of those pictures.
Thank God.
But one thing to, um, we, we did receive some, um, that some numbers from the state. The governor's budget was submitted, and it's somewhat favorable. I mean, obviously, we would have loved it to have been a bit higher, but we did see, um, an increase in chapter seventy of about a million two in, uh, charter tuition reimbursement, an increase of about forty thousand. And a slight increase in unrestricted general government aid, uh, forty-five, um, point five thousand. So, uh, as much as that is helpful, it, it doesn't fulfill all the wish list requirements, and we are starting to get our numbers in. Uh, we're meeting, I met with, um, our health insurance company today. Um, have another meeting and some more discussions with our liability insurance, and it looks like those numbers are coming in favorable also. So we'll have some meetings later this week and get some refinement numbers on the budget and have a much better, um, and much clearer picture in a week or so. Um, the only other thing is, is had we, as we discussed earlier, as I may be asking and putting it on the agenda for the next selectmen meeting to, uh, just open and close the town meeting warrant to make some minor adjustments, there were two. Um, there was one big piece of equipment, um, that is in our capital plan, a six-wheel dump truck that we had in there for two-hundred-sixty-five thousand, and then the numbers are coming in now, um, even higher than that. Uh, and it's an important piece of equipment that they really have to replace. And that, and then again, um, had we had, as we had touched on earlier, the Washington Street project, um, requires that we do pay for the initial engineering for it, and it, it's, that is an important project. And it, we were open to use just our, um, American Recovery Plan Act money through Plymouth County, and they're requiring us that if we're gonna do that, that we actually put that in front of town meeting, so. Um, it's no cost to the town, but it's a matter of the town approving it because it's, for whatever reason, because it's being tied in with other state grant money. So, um, that's about it. Again, um, having those numbers in and, and getting down to, um, some of our refined numbers on insurance costs are gonna help us make some, uh, big, um, movement and refine the budget number and make some decisions.
Any questions? Thank you, Scott. Anything else?
Just a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Good night.